All right. And then we're going to call to order tonight's Corcoran Planning Commission meeting, June 5th, 2025. I'm going to start with roll call. Commissioner Lind here. Commissioner Zackman.
Here.
Commissioner Hargreaves.
Here.
Commissioner Kazuki.
Here.
And Commissioner Broomend is here. And then I would like to invite you to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and at this time, we'll ask staff or any of the commissioners if there are any changes that need to be proposed to the agenda for tonight.
Staff has no changes.
Okay, and if none of the commissioners have any changes to request as well, then I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second. Oh. You can have it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, and at this time, I just want to deviate from the agenda slightly and allow our new, recognize our new commissioner who's filling out to the Planning Commission, and allow Commissioner Zackman a moment to introduce himself.
Yeah, hi, Jay Zackman. I've lived in Corcoran for four years now and just excited to be on the commission and, you know, look forward to learning and contributing, so.
Thank you, we're glad to have you, so welcome. What we're going to do next is open the floor for the open forum. The open forum is an opportunity for any resident to approach or be heard by the Planning Commission for any item that is not on tonight's agenda. It's not usually an opportunity to debate, and you want to make sure that you're recognized by the chair before you go ahead and make comment. And usually when we comment, we want to make sure we go up to the podium so that we can make sure that members of the public listening on Zoom and then also for recording meeting minutes can be heard. Is there anyone who's here tonight for the open forum? Because comments are limited to in-person comments. If not, then we will go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is the meeting minutes from May 1st, 2025. There were only three of us present, but you all did receive the meeting minutes, so does anyone have any comments or corrections to the meeting minutes? Okay? If not, then I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 1st, 2025.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, and that gets us to tonight's new business. We have two items before us tonight, and we're going to start with the first one with it is Aaron's Knolling Open Space and Preservation Preliminary Platte, and we're going to begin with a staff report.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yes, item 6A tonight, Aaron's Norling OSMP Preliminary Platte, Conditional Use Permit and Variance. This is a request from Rob and Seth Norley. The subject property is 6700 Pioneer Trail, which is, let me get my pointer out. This parcel here with an existing home on it, as well as the farmland surrounding it as well, so a total site size of 38.69 acres. The proposal would be to plat seven residential lots and three outlots, which would be constructed in two phases. So when the final plat comes in, it would be phase one, and then a second final plat would come down the line for phase two. So right now, the preliminary plat is all seven residential lots. The property itself is currently zoned rural residential and guided rural slash ag residential and is located outside of the 2040 MUSA boundary. It's actually just north of it, it's bordering on Pioneer Trail to the south there. Going into the preliminary plat analysis, this is an open space and preservation plat. So the OS and PE plats are opportunities where development rights could be increased through the exchange of a paved public, a paved public street to serve the development, and 50% of gross acreage, which 50% of that gross acreage needs to be upland, is preserved as open space under a temporary conservation easement until municipal services like sanitary sewer and water are available to the site. Again, seven residential lots are proposed, ranging in size from 1.5 acres to 3.2 acres. This would include six new home lots and then one lot for the existing home on the site. That's not going away with this application. With the OS and PE plats, there is no minimum lot size, but each lot has to be able to support two septic sites. And then all would be served with the newly installed roadway. The applicants are proposing three open space outlots, two of which appear to be continually being farmed, and then one would be containing a stormwater pond, which would total 28.61 acres of open space. Current, the applicants plan to continue to retain ownership and farm the land. However, with all open space and preservation plats, there is a restrictive covenant required. This restrictive covenant would restrict who is able to own the land until those municipal services are available. So the code outlines, you know, it could either be owned or dedicated by the, it could either be dedicated to the city if the city were to accept it. Otherwise, the open space outlots could be sold to one, to a family member who lives in the development, or it could be dedicated to a homeowners association, which comprises of a majority of the homes within the development. And then, you know, once the municipal services are available to the site, then it could be sold to a developer at that time. With the setback requirements for the Rural Residential District, all of the principal structured, principal structures on each of the lots appear to be accommodated with this proposal. The one, the one area where it seems to be not compliant would be the existing agricultural building that is within the minimum setback area of three property lines. Two of those are existing setback conditions and are legal non-conforming setbacks. However, the setback from the, from the east property line, where my cursor is, would be a new non-conformity that would be created as a result of this plat and would require a variance. And that's going to be discussed further in this presentation. The design guidelines for the OS and PE are all satisfied except for a 100-foot perimeter buffer along Pioneer Trail. The applicants are requesting a variance from that condition as that would, as that would conflict with the existing agricultural building on Lot 2. And that's also discussed further in the variance section. I apologize for the small text here, but there are, going through the, going through the design objectives, a number of them have been, have been satisfied with this application. I won't go through all of them, but jumping down to the ones that aren't applicable to this specific application, one of the requirements is that the development locate neighborhood recreational open spaces such that they are integral, such as they are an integral part of the neighborhood. That's not applicable to this application, as they are not proposing any recreational open spaces. One that has not been satisfied but could be satisfied through a condition of approval would be providing covenants to create an architectural theme that can be figured out on the back end as a condition of approval. And then a couple of conditions that need some additional information is the size of the garages on the houses, just to confirm that they don't dominate the streetscape, as well as landscaping the common areas and right-of-way along the streets with native vegetation. The new roadway, as a part of this development, would be constructed off of Pioneer Trail, which would require compliance with the Rural Collector Street Road Section. This is also a variance that's being requested by the applicant and will be discussed further later on this report. And a ghost plat was provided with this application, which shows a future public street from Pioneer Trail that would serve a future subdivision once those municipal services are available to the site. A condition of approval for this ghost plat would be just to revise it to show future connections to the north where there is an existing roadway easement on the north side of the development there. Heading into the conditional use permit, the applicants are requesting a conditional use permit to allow an accessory structure or agricultural building on a site that's less than 10 acres with a footprint of 4,010 square feet, as well as a sidewall height of 13 feet 6 inches. Staff finds that the standards of the conditional use permit are satisfied. However, we do recommend that two conditions of approval be added to that, which are that the siding and roofing be replaced or repaired to comply with the standards outlined in Section 1060.050, as well as a condition that in the event that the outlaw is no longer farmed or if the accessory structure is no longer used for agricultural purposes, then the footprint of that building needs to be reduced to the buyright limit or removed from the property. And then going into the variances, there are three variances that are being reviewed as application. The first one is an exemption from the 100-foot perimeter planted buffer zone along Pioneer Trail. There is a practical difficulty in complying with this as the existing agricultural building is within that 100-foot buffer, and that would take up most of the front yard for the residential structure. And it would be difficult to comply with these standards because of those reasons. So staff recommends approval of that specific variance and recommend a proposed condition that, that the buffer area still be planted in areas where it wouldn't conflict with existing structures, so at least still some sort of buffer there. The second variance is an exemption from the engineer design standards from the public road. Specifically, the applicant's request that the street width be reduced and the aggregate base for the public road be reduced as well. Staff didn't see the practical difficulty with those, with that request, and that wasn't demonstrated through the application, so staff doesn't recommend approval of that specific variance request. And then the third variance would be deviation from the 100-foot agricultural setback, agricultural building setback to allow a 45-foot setback. This is a practical difficulty as the new road being constructed is going in between an existing agricultural building and an existing home. So the alternative was either place it closer to the home and have the home be non-compliant with the setback requirements or have it conflict with existing underground utilities. So staff believes that this is a reasonable request for the variance of the reduced setback for the agricultural building. And then we just add the condition of approval, again, upgrading the siding and roof on the structure to comply with the building material standards just to mitigate that reduced setback along the new roadway. So at this point, staff recommends that you open a public hearing and take testimony, and staff recommends approval of the draft resolution with conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report, specifically the draft resolution approving the preliminary plat and conditional use permit, as well as the draft resolution approving two of the variances and then denying a third variance.
Thank you. Great. All right, at this point in time, we will open up the public hearing, and this is an opportunity to speak specifically to this agenda item, so specifically to the OS and PE preliminary plat conditional use permit and variances requested. Is there anyone who's here to, and I will give the applicant time as well, separate from the public hearing, if you'd like to speak on your application. But if there are anyone here who would like to come and make public comment regarding this business item. If not, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, and at this time, we, I'd love to give the applicant the opportunity to address the commission if you want, or you can just be available for questions during the deliberation. That is entirely up to you.
All of that, sure.
All right, thank you. If you could just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Rob Norley. I am the owner of 6700 Pioneer Trail. Just to kind of a little bit of backstory to kind of what we're trying to create here. My family has owned this property for about 100 years, paid property taxes for about 100 years. The only reason we're really doing this is because we decided to have four children, and they all want to live by us. So what we're really creating is just an environment for our kids to kind of be part of what we're doing out there. We've been working with the city quite closely just to making sure it's the guidelines of the city requests. But the ghost plat, I know for those who are here that may be wondering about the ghost plat, that was just a city requirement. That's not really the intention that we necessarily have. We're just looking for the additional lots for our children and then a couple of leases and debuts of the family. So these houses won't be something that we build and then sell. They're all going to be staying within the family, just for a little bit of backstory. That's kind of our goal there. And then the agricultural buildings are some that we use. The guy that leases the land from us uses it to store some of his equipment throughout the winter and stuff. He doesn't have it there as much in the summer, but through the winter, he'll keep a lot of his stuff, his equipment out there. So that's kind of what we're asking for the CUP, so.
Perfect. Thank you so much for the explanation, and if we do have any additional questions, we may ask you to come up, but.
Well, good.
At this point in time, then, we'll open it up for commission discussion or recommendation. So if you have any questions for staff or for the applicant, or if you just want to bring our highlight points of discussion, who would like to take the charge?
I guess I have one question. You said the agricultural lot, it's going to, or the outlaw, the big outlaw, is going to continue to be farmed.
Correct.
And you leased that out to somebody to farm that?
Correct.
And you live across the street, across Pioneer Trail?
No, but I live right on 6700.
Okay, you live in the existing house, okay. Where's the access to the agricultural, then? Does it, does it, because you've got the agricultural building on Lot 2.
It'll come off of the west side of the road that we are creating is where it'll come off, is not on Pioneer Trail. I believe that's, I think that's what we were talking about.
So it ends in a cul-de-sac right now, and then there's an easement there to, to expand that cul-de-sac and then to go into the ghost plat eventually?
Oh, down the road.
Yeah, she's asking not the building, but the land in particular. Yep, no, that's okay.
Yes, correct.
That's how they'll access the agricultural or the outlaw?
Yes, and actually, our goal will be in phase one. Initially, we're going to stop the cul-de-sac, so we're trying to decide if continuing to call second phase one maybe, just to get the road all done one time, so to do it twice is another consideration.
That was my other question, because it seemed like it would be cheaper to do it and then not impinge on Lot 4.
Right.
Yeah.
And that will serve us all those lots, that we go it all the way out?
There was some notes in here too about maintaining the outlots. It looks like there's the stormwater pond on the one outlaw up on the east side there. Does that require maintenance?
Yes. Yes, yeah, so we have a stormwater maintenance agreement that would be applied to that stormwater pond.
What's Outlet 3? If we've got the big area for agriculture, we got the stormwater, is it, yeah, that little strip?
Strip, yeah.
And what is that for?
I don't.
That may be an error in the drawings.
Yeah.
From, from staff's interpretation, it appeared to be more farmland, and one of the conditions was to combine it with the larger outlaw, so. I, yeah, if that's, if that's accurate, then.
Yeah.
Okay. So the other, the third outlaw may just be the extension of the road eventually?
Potentially, but we would, I don't think it's quite big enough to be the full right-of-way. I think it was more like a half right-of-way, if anything. So we would need to, if there were to be a road connection to the west ever, it would require some development of Outlet A. So, or, I'm sorry, the large outlaw. I don't know if that's Outlet A or not. So I, at this point, the city's just saying we just make it one outlaw and it doesn't need to be separated, so.
That was all I had. Congratulations that your family all wants to be close to you, that's great.
That's awesome.
All right, this is a good cut, so.
That could be it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Please, you go first.
I have a question for staff. And this has to do with the fact that we are giving the owner development rights for preservation. But we're, we're really not preserving anything. We're just saying you can develop it in the future. Why do we call it preserving?
Because it is preserving open space and farmland for the foreseeable future. This area is not in the MUSA, and I don't believe there is a political desire at this time to expand our MUSA boundary. So I would say even into our 2050 plan, this would likely be preserved, open space, farmland.
So why don't we just have it preserved and not have a ghost plan associated with it?
It's not something that we're able to do and be in compliance with the Met Council requirements. We can do a temporary preservation, and if there is like a parkland component, then we can do a permanent preservation. But the, in order to comply with the Met Council's standards and to be able to have this program, which technically surpasses the 1 in 10 density limit, they require that it be a temporary preservation, so.
Because there is no such thing as a, in perpetuity with anything that we request or try to do. That's the, yeah. But yeah, it's a great question.
So I'm going to ask, can I ask to address the applicant?
Yeah, absolutely. We just may ask you to come back up to the podium, if you don't mind, just so that we can make sure that everybody's hearing. Sorry, I didn't ask before. Thank you so much for your willingness to move.
So you made the comment that you're never going to develop that area?
It's just one of the requirements that the city had. I'm sure I won't be developing it or anything. What my kids will choose to do, that wasn't our intention. I guess that's maybe better stated. Our intention would be designed this wasn't because we wanted to build all these houses to the north every lot. That was never our intention. It was more of the open space preservation with working with the city and making it happen through that venue or that avenue.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm done.
Commissioner Lind?
You can sit. Okay, so then I'm just looking for a little bit of clarification on the number, the page 2, staff report. On site is located outside of the MUSA, but is located within the future MUSA expansion area. But we're saying it's not.
Yeah, so the issue with that southwest area to begin with is it's becoming less and less clear how it's ever going to receive city sewer and water. And as, or we were supposed to be approaching a time when the Met Council was supposed to be confronting us with answers to ensure that that southwest area would, that is within the MUSA, would have some kind of connection, and they still haven't completed that study. So at this time, I don't believe there is a desire to expand that from, just from the conversations that we've had as a city with city council. I do not believe that our leadership intends to expand into that future area that was identified, because we don't even know how to serve the area that is within the MUSA. So I don't believe, so that's why I said, I believe with our 2050 plans, this area will still not be within the MUSA, and I can be, I'm fairly confident that this would be preserved as open space or farmland at least through 2050.
Okay.
I think the reason that it's on there to call out that the MUSA ends just directly south of Pioneer Trail from this property is just perhaps to highlight its proximity.
And it might change.
That's the only reason.
Well, yeah, it alluded me to think that it could be in the future, so.
Yes, we, we have to identify a future MUSA area, and it may be that our 2050 plan, knowing the constraints that area has now, that that has to now shift to somewhere else in the city. But that was what that 2040 plan is showing. But there are some, some significant constraints that we're having to deal with that I'm not confident that that is real anymore.
Okay, thank you. And not to drain, but can I ask another question, mostly for my learning? Page 4, second paragraph, it says there's a maximum lot size of four acres, which is twice the minimum lot area of the Rural Residential District. Can, can you try to layman's terms that a little bit for me?
Yeah, so for the open space and preservation plat, there is no minimum lot size, because the idea is you want consolidated lots. But there is a maximum lot size, because again, you want consolidated, you want smaller lots, because you need to have enough land to preserve for the open space to meet that requirement. So the four-acre maximum that is, the open space and preservation plat says that the maximum lot size is twice the size of the minimum lot size in the underlying district. That's how you get the four. I know, it's, there's a reason why I have a job.
It's clear as mine.
No minimum lot size, but twice the minimum.
And that's why it didn't make sense. Okay, so, well, let's just keep moving on on that one. Okay, one more thing. I'm assuming then there was a typo, I was, yeah, based on Dwight, your report, that it said that you are supportive of the third variance.
Yeah, it should say does not.
But it should say, we do not support it.
That's a big typo on the report.
Fine, just want to clarify. Can we ask the applicant to speak about that, why they're requesting that variance? Would you mind?
No. The biggest reason was cost, just to try to lower the cost, because every dollar we're spending is coming out of our pockets. So I think it was more of a cost issue than anything. We're trying to keep the numbers at a level that we can handle as a family. I think that was the biggest reason.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
And we have those requirements because, well, it would be a paved road though, wouldn't it?
It has to be a paved road, yeah, to get the.
But then it might deteriorate quicker if it doesn't have the, the base that is required.
It's just the engineering standard.
Yes.
That way we have a standard road width across the city, and there's not mismatching.
But yes, I believe there's an engineering theory behind it, that that's the base that we have and require.
I'm just thinking about tractors going to be on that road, right? And so is there a safety consideration with why it would be that wide? Or do we not think that's a consideration?
As far as what engineering is required, so basically, in order to get the density bonus, you have to go off of the city standards. So I don't believe that the city standard was created thinking of the tractor. However, I do know that there are examples of tractors on our public roadways today, some at times. So I don't know that they can't handle the width. I guess I'm not quite understanding the question.
I think you're just looking for, correct me if I'm wrong, looking for factual information for a, to, to consider the variance, right? So that's what you're doing. So you're trying to say like, is the request for the, that standard of road also have something to do with the potential of larger equipment being on the roadway?
Yes.
Is that fair?
Thank you.
I, I can't speak for engineering as to why that width was established. I think it has more to do with two-way traffic and trying to make sure that there's also space on the side. And then the other thing I would just add is when we are considering the practical difficulty standards, both by state law and our city ordinances, economic considerations cannot be the primary consideration. So that's why we felt the practical difficulty standard had not been met as staff.
Got it. That's helpful. Okay, well, I'll just make other comment and then I'll yield here. I think the CUP preliminary plat makes sense. I think you did a beautiful job articulating the practical difficulties on the first two variances, so I'll be ready to make a motion whenever the discussion is complete.
Okay. And then my only question is in regards to the stormwater pond, as whatever outlet it is named. So the, whether or not the cul-de-sac is done in two phases or all of it incomplete, the access to that stormwater pond is, or is this, this faint drawing on page, the second page of the rendering? It shows like, so you see the main cul-de-sac, then you kind of see the faint drawing of the second cul-de-sac, but then you see the road go all the way through. Is the plan that if you do, eventually that will stop at the second cul-de-sac and then the road, or the road all the way to the back is going? That would be the completed design for this preliminary plat area?
So the completed design for the, for the plat would ultimately be the cul-de-sac constructed to, where my cursor is, at that last lot there? But there would be a right-of-way that extends beyond that lot to the outlaw?
Okay.
So that's how maintenance would reach that stormwater pond?
Okay. Great. And then just for clarification, because it wasn't specifically called out, but the renderings show the agricultural building, the, the lot that it will be on, a house will be built on that lot. So this whole idea that, okay, maybe it was, thank you. That just helps clarify something that was obvious, but just wasn't stated, so. At this point in time, is the first resolution written in such a way that it approves the conditional use permit? It approves the preliminary plat and approves the first two variances and denies the variance for the aggregate? Is that how the first resolution is written?
The resolutions provided are, the first resolution is for the preliminary plat and the conditional use permit, and then the second resolution is for the variances. So two approvals, one denial.
Okay. All right, so, but we can do it as a whole in kaboodle. We don't need to do it each one specifically, or would you prefer that we do each thing, item specifically?
You could certainly make a motion for all of it, and if that fails, then we would probably need to go with it by bit to figure out why it failed.
Okay. All right, so, so what that means is that we could look at each little piece of this. and go through it and say approve or deny for each little piece. But if everyone feels confident, then we could make, someone could make, I don't need to be the person who makes the motion. Someone could make a motion for, um, everything all at once.
As the staff recommended it?
You could, or you could, uh, make a, a different change, correct? And then it would, yes.
Well, I could, I, I can make a motion to approve it as the staff has recommended it, which is approving the preliminary plat, the conditional use permit on all of the variances except for the roadway variance.
So approving the variance for the buffer, oh, sorry.
Yes, the buffers and.
Okay, and I.
Since there's an existing building, they're gonna continue to use it, they're gonna improve the looks, so it'll go better with a new neighborhood.
And you don't have to explain your motion. It was beautifully made. You did really well and Hart Reeves, uh, seconded it. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? All right, thank you so much. Thanks for taking the time to come out tonight. It's always great to hear from the applicant. All right, and we are moving on to the second, um, piece of new business, which is an agribusiness zoning ordinance amendment, city file twenty-five dash zero one seven. And we're gonna begin this with a staff report as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as people filter out. Item six B tonight, the agribusiness zoning ordinance amendment. Um, this is a request that comes to you from Margaret and John Fernandez. They're requesting this ordinance amendment to establish an agribusiness use within the rural residential district, which would allow them to, um, establish a wine tasting room slash vineyard on their property at twenty-three zero two zero County Road thirty. So some background on the request, back in September, a city council reviewed a concept plan for a wine tasting room on the applicant's property. And through this review, it was revealed that the use was not completely compatible, not completely compatible with any of the uses identified within the zoning ordinance. Um, the two uses that were kind of reviewed back and forth were the conditional home occupation license and the event center. Um, the issues with, um, a conditional home occupation license, um, you know, while it does allow customers to come visit the property, um, it would not allow employees on the site, which is an important part to the applicant's business model, um, which includes, um, employees and vendors and such. Um, and then the event center would allow employees and vendors on the site. However, um, hosting events is not the sole purpose or the intended purpose of the applicant's proposal. Um, and so it's, it's kind of a workaround and it doesn't fully capture what their needs are for, um, for their operations. So during that meeting, council suggested that the applicants explore an agribusiness ordinance amendment. Um, and it would apply more to their operation. So what is an agribusiness specifically? Um, the National Agricultural Library defines agribusiness or agritourism as a form of commercial enterprise that links agricultural production and/or processing with tourism to attract visitors onto a farm, ranch, or other agricultural businesses uh, for the purposes of entertaining or educating the visitors while generating income for the farm, ranch, or business owner. Through staff's analysis, we reviewed a number of established, um, agribusiness ordinances uh, from cities comparable to Corcoran, both in size and character, um, as well as the existing zoning ordinance to ensure consistency throughout the city. Um, so through this review, staff identified several performance standards, um, that should be addressed with this ordinances. Um, and I can go through these now, and then after we go through them, the commission can feel free to amend them or take some out or add some more, um, however you see fit. So, um, the first one is a minimum parcel size of five acres. Um, the location of, uh, the specific business would either have to be on a major roadway, which in our code is defined as a county road or a state highway, or have direct access onto a major collector or minor collector road that is less than a thousand feet from an intersection with a major roadway. The intention of this is to prevent, um, smaller local streets from seeing an influx of traffic and seeing a big change, uh, around, you know, more local streets and neighborhoods. Traffic itself must not create a nuisance to nearby residents by way of traffic or noise. Uh, and parking must be accommodated onsite and comply with, uh, the standards of the zoning ordinance. Uh, the maximum structure size also, um, is consistent with the maximum structure size, uh, accessory structure size outlined in the zoning ordinance. Uh, noise is, um, an item that staff foresees as a significant issue with some of these, um, applications. So, um, we added three conditions, no sound amplification, no sound amplification systems may be used after ten PM unless otherwise approved by council. Uh, stages and amp equipment must be oriented away from any residence within five hundred feet of the property and oriented away from the nearest residential property. And then if an agribusiness involves some sort of music event, uh, that music event must be limited to the hours of eleven AM to ten PM on weekends and holidays only, not throughout the week, uh, for a maximum of six hours per day. Uh, and then outdoor lighting must comply with the standards outlined in the zoning ordinance as well. Um, sanitary facilities, uh, this refers back to the Minnesota State Building Code, which outlines, um, the number of, uh, facilities required based on the number of attendees for, uh, a given event or normal use on the site. Uh, and then any outdoor activity must be set back at least one hundred feet from adjacent residential property lines. Property lines, so that includes walking trails, um, crafting activities and things of that nature. So in summary, staff researched the existing ordinances of other cities and generated these sets of performance standards, uh, which would address a wide range of potential concerns. Um, so as the commission considers these, um, the commission may want to consider if they find this use to be an appropriate use within the rural residential district as a whole, uh, as well as does the commission wish to amend any of the conditions proposed by staff? And at this point, staff recommends that you open the public hearing and take testimony. And then we recommend approval of the draft ordinance and the findings of fact for that ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Dwight. At this point in time, then, what we will do is open up the public hearing related to this, um, agribusiness zoning ordinance amendment. And because it's not a specific application, like, this would be an opportunity for you guys to, uh, raise questions or concerns. Um, if questions or concerns are raised, then what we will do is, uh, make sure that we address them after the public hearing is closed, rather than engaging in a back and forth. Um, so at this point in time, if there is anyone who wants to, um, come up to the podium, there's only two in the room, folks, no pressure, but, uh, they are limited to just in-person comments, even though, uh, hopefully we have folks, uh, paying attention and joining us from home. Um, if you guys do not want to speak, which is totally okay, then we will just.
The applicants, just so that you are aware.
But it's a zoning, I know they're the applicants, because I was actually here during your concept plan, but it's not an actual.
Did it? Yep, a zoning ordinance amendment application, so they've submitted it, so they've put the city on a.
It's not just an ordinance.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a city-driven zoning ordinance, so I think that's what you're thinking of.
Yes, that is what I'm thinking of. Okay, well, if you guys, uh, don't want to be a part of the public hearing, then we will close the public hearing and we'll just give you an opportunity to still come up and address. So at this point in time, there's no one here, um, so I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay. Um, and so at this point in time, we're just gonna move into our commission discussion and recommendation, unless you guys would like to approach, um, the commission to raise any questions or concerns. Okay, all right, then, um, we will go ahead and begin, um, discussion. I just have two questions, um, that I wanted to ask, but the first is regarding the roadway um, and the less than a thousand feet from a major intersection. And I guess the reason that I, I see the valid, um, stipulation, that, that would be, my concern is, is that as development has, um, increased here in the MUSA area, we have more dump trucks driving down our road to drop off their dirt than I think any agribusiness would bring in. And so it sort of feels like to me that, um, that perhaps this is a condition that we want to consider, whether or not there's an adjustment to be made from. Um, so that's, that's my only reason, because I wouldn't want to limit somebody who could potentially bring some economic development to their property. I guess some of it would consider, th- this is, just to clarify, always coming in as a CUP.
IUP.
IUP, 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 interim use permit. So for Commissioners Zachman, do you want to just give a quick summary on what an interim use permit means then?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
A conditional use permit runs with the land, so, um, it's, it's similar in that it's a, it's an allowed use within the district, but you have to go through an approval process and the city can stipulate additional conditions to mitigate the use, uh, to have it fit within the surrounding area. Interim use permit is similar, but a conditional use permit, uh, it runs with the land perpetually. So as long as the conditions of approval continue to be satisfied, then it is, it's like a diamond, it's forever. And then, um, with an IUP, it's a little bit more limited, there's a sunset clause. So typically, we write our IUPs so that they're subject to review every three years. Um, the, if the land is sold to another owner, that owner would have to come in for a new IUP because of the change of ownership. And sometimes there's additional sunset clauses that we'll put on a use. Um, not necessarily for an agribusiness, but just sometimes if it's a property that's eventually going to receive municipal services, then there might be a sunset clause tied to, uh, municipal services being available to the area. So it gives a little bit more ability for the city to, um, really review the use and potentially, um, have a little bit more ability to, uh, revoke the use, I suppose. But I would say we, uh, to this point, I've not seen an IUP revoked. I think it's more of just the, the, the three-year check and mark is kind of what I think is why the city likes those, so.
Thank you.
And it, it, I mean, it's good for all of us, so it's not just for you. But, so that is, that's just a, uh, a concern I have, I guess. Feeling like, um, wondering whether that will restrict, um, other people from, um, having access to this type of model, um, on their farmland, simply because there may be more than a thousand feet from, uh, and perhaps it, like, yeah, you guys can go for it, I'll think of more ways to say it, but.
Are you, are you thinking that the thousand feet is not enough, or is it too much?
I am saying that I think it's, it's more restrictive than I would care to see if we're trying to allow those who are paying significant property taxes to have, um, for, generally for services they're not receiving, like plow trucks, um, allow them to, uh, bring an additional source of income to their, to their home. So, uh, and I guess we, we can clarify what is a minor or a major road. Um, there is a map that shows what those minor and major roads are. Maybe we can leave minor roads away, but a lot of the main thoroughways of dirt roads in our rural residential area, I think are considered, a majority, a lot of them are considered major roadways. Um, but those would have to be within a thousand access from that property to, would have to be a thousand feet away from a.
So I was looking at the map and it looks like a principal arterial would be Highway fifty-five, basically. That's the only principal arterial. Uh, minor expander would be Highway one oh one and Highway one sixteen north of thirty. Uh, mi- uh, minor connector roadway would be like County Road nineteen, County Road thirty, County Road fifty, County Road one seventeen west of nineteen. I couldn't find a minor reliever on the map, so I'm assuming.
We actually have minor relievers, yeah.
Maybe it's County Road one seventeen between nineteen and one sixteen and one sixteen south of thirty, because those weren't covered in any of the other, but they're all paved county roads or highways, basically. So that's what we're talking about, right?
Well, so it's saying that it has to be, that access has to be within a thousand feet of.
And it's a paved road, basically, because all of these, our county roads, they're all paved roads. It wouldn't be like Strayer Road is a gravel road.
Oh, okay, so a major roadway, I think, I think.
Major roadway would be Strayer. It would be.
Well, a major roadway are county roads typically, and then the highway front would also be considered a major roadway. That's how we have it defined in our zoning ordinance, and we could certainly clarify that. So technically, our county roads would be major roadways, and some of our county roads are, uh, most of them are minor connectors. Uh, we have one that's an other arterial, which is the County Road one seventeen and County Road one sixteen.
One sixteen.
So, um, I, what's, I think specifically you're discussing is the, we were, we were to, and trying to recognize that not every property has access on a county road. And even if they do have frontage on a county road, if they have frontage on a more localized roadway, the county's gonna push for that. They're not gonna want to give access. So recognizing that complication, that's where the, and this is language taken from our place of worship ordinance within our suburban residential districts, so that's where the language came from. And we can, I don't think either one of us are tied to it. It was just kind of a starting point.
Yeah.
Way of presenting.
Yep.
But basically saying that a minor, if it is on a minor collector or a major, was it minor and major collector, it needed to be within a thousand feet of a county road, essentially.
Right.
But we could certainly increase that, or we could remove that, as your recommendation. I don't, I, I don't think there's a wrong answer to it, but yeah, minor collector could theoretically be non-paved. Um, it could be a dirt road, so, um, but the major roadways, our county roads aren't paved.
Yes.
Yep.
I, that, that's where I would start, and I understand it's the beginning of a discussion. I just would like to see, um, I just think that, um, trying to figure out, like, unless we're limit, you know, because you could do a farm workshop that you could teach people how to process their own animals. You're talking about twenty people. And if you want people to utilize the process instead of just doing it on their own, that, that type of thing is not gonna be generating the same amount of traffic or noise or anything that, um, that potentially other uses within agribusiness could do. And so I understand there's some flexibility in the IUP process, and we also want to have starting off points. Um, so I would be open to just considering whether that is, um, I, I want to look at whether that limits people.
What? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, sorry, I'm, the, I'm reading from the staff report. The intent of this condition is to prevent agribusiness-related traffic from relying on, relying on local residential streets, minimizing traffic impact on nearby homes. I, so I think that's all good, and that's, so like, the premise of it, I like. But maybe to your point, it can be, I think it should still exist. It, first of all, because I think that premise is good. So maybe to your point, if, if it's estimated traffic of less than twenty cars per week, could we add something like that to the, the term?
I think, uh, we could add a sub-paragraph that, that says, um, agribusiness uses with car traffic of less than twenty vehicles a day or week.
Yeah, whatever, whatever we want to say.
You tell me, because this would be your recommendation.
Well.
Could be subject to, or could be, um, could be allowed on the local roadway, yeah, could be allowed on the local roadway, um, from the standard. We could, we could figure out the exact wording. I'm sorry, just think of it on the spot.
I know. I think that we would want to stay away from number of car trips, because we know, we know that that is, it's come out before, and that is a hard thing to regulate. Like, who's gonna sit out there and count the cars, right? And we talked about that as just being a hard mark. Um, and so I don't know what that verbiage, um, that, that would feel successful moving forward is, um.
To your point, Chair Brumman, also, I, I do know of a few, going, some of the subdivisions we've had more recently, there's been a few large properties at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Right, we have a thirty, yeah.
So it'd be a local roadway and they would not be able to.
Correct.
So if that's something that you think is incorrect, then I would say we would need to, yeah, we would need to remove the language requiring it be located, have access on a minor collector.
And is there a way that we can just frame it where, um, it instead just becomes a part of what you're looking at when the IUP is viewed?
Yes, that could be.
Yeah, that's comfortable.
Because, yeah, the underhill lane, the largest property is at the back. It would have to use, yeah. Um, and that's, you know, significant acreage. Um, so I, I, if we can leave, if we're allowed to leave such a statement in there in terms of, um, I, I'm, I'm gonna put some more thought into it. So you guys go ahead and, and bring up any other discussions that, uh, you might have related to the agribusiness.
I have a comment or a question regarding the lighting. Is there a time that's associated with that particular standard, that section ten sixty dot zero forty?
Not at this time, no, it just has to be a one-foot candle at the property line. But you could, we could certainly add a requirement for lights to be turned off as of ten PM or something.
Yeah, I would like to add that, and I think ten o'clock would be a reasonable time.
That goes with the noise, too.
Yeah, goes with the noise.
Can we say anything? Yeah, oh, yes, by all means, just please come up to the podium and state your name and ad. and address for the record, please.
My name's Margaret Fernandez, my address is two three zero two zero, County Road thirty, here in Corcoran. I, you know, I agree with the light and the sound, I think that is important, but when we start putting, especially sound, but when we start putting parameters around, I also want to think about, like, all of the farms that have their lights on all night, we would never do that, but once you start putting timelines on people, upon that, I, I would want maybe extend at least the lighting a little later, because people also have farms with lights right outside, like, what, what are we talking about with lights here? Like, what are the rules?
If we have a holding time at ten o'clock, then we need to get people out.
Sir, you should, you should come up to the.
It's okay, I got it, we do appreciate, and I think it's a great concern, and we will make sure that we address it in the, in the discussion.
Okay.
Natalie.
Just because I have to clean afterwards, I mean, you live in your house, we live there, that type of thing.
True.
Thank you.
So I think a way around that would potentially be, so for example, the new Mahavan application that went to City Council last week, they tied a stipulation that the parking lot not have.
Parking lights.
Yeah, but the building could have lights, but they'd be motion sensor, so that there, so you could still have people leave the site safely, if there is people on the site that shouldn't be, that's still visible, but to still try to allow for dark skies in the area.
And I also just wanna say, as somebody who lives in the rural residential area, you do get, certain times of the year, tractors are out till one, two in the morning sometimes, so it's not, it's not a never occurrence, and so it's not unrealistic for there to be, and, and how do you decipher from those regular outdoor lights if it is a place where you live, but you also offer a business? Especially because traditional commercial buildings are not required to turn off their lights at a ten PM timeframe either, so that feels like, I wanna make sure, I guess, for me, the intent of doing this is to give our residents another opportunity to bring economic development to our city, and so I wanna make sure that we do it carefully, and we do consider the impact, but that, so thoughtfully and meaningfully, but that we don't do it restrictively, because that is, it, that is a, feels like an obstacle, so.
Well, I mean, I'm.
So I guess the lighting standards in the city, why does that feel inadequate? The lighting standards that already exist for development, why does that feel not adequate enough to address the agribusiness as it comes?
Are you asking me why I want to limit the time?
No, I'm just asking why this feels less than adequate.
Because if we're talking, if, if we're talking about a, an agricultural area, and all of a sudden now we're saying, okay, it's gotta meet the standard of ten sixty dot zero forty, that if I understand it correctly, restricts lumens to the edge of the site to one foot candle? Do you know what one foot candle at the edge of the site is? It's quite lot, that's bright, and I understand agricultural lighting on barns and things like that, but that's nowhere near one foot candle at the edge of the site, and that's what I'm concerned about, so.
Do you consider a different proposal other what, other than saying a specific time that exterior lights need to be turned off that you feel like would address that?
If we, if we do something different with the limits, the lumens at the edge of the property, I would be open to that.
Is that something that has ever, is there a difference in that one foot candle based on the type of business that it is? Is that a standard that changes throughout the city?
No.
Right, so it is a set standard regardless of whether you are a quick trip or you are an agribusiness, and so I guess I don't see agribusinesses as generally falling into that same category, or, or that the use for lights would even be near the same.
So, guidelines, sorry, just looking up, but Dark Sky Society, they use, and I'm not trying to contradict, I apologize, but they, they say that for dark skies, limits, spill lights across the property, light levels at the property line should not exceed zero point one foot candles adjacent to business properties. So that could theoretically still allow for lights, but just making sure that they're far enough away from the property line that it should limit the impact from the property.
And I don't see it at all as a, as a challenge, I think I'm trying to figure out how do we hear a concern and move forward with something that feels like a realistic.
Right.
Proposal. So if that is, you know, I, I do, I, I can see folks living, who live in the rural residential area appreciating some of the dark skies, even though that's already going away, and so if that is something that is recommended, then I could see that if we were to make that adjustment, does that feel like something that would satisfy some of your concerns regarding the lighting? Rather than, so pursuing that language in the zoning ordinance, rather than pursuing something that is a set time?
Yes.
All right. Does anyone else have other things that they want to discuss regarding the language or the ideas, is there something that you want to see added, or something that you want to see changed?
I think just clarifying the roadway is, is important, and maybe making a distinction, because it sounds to me like it's allowed on paved roads from the language that they've got here, and from that map that you brought up that I looked at, they, they were all paved roads, so maybe just clarify that, because these are allowed on gravel roads, right? Agribusinesses would be allowed on a gravel road?
Yeah, so I think right now, the way that they're currently written, it would limit it, if we use under-hill, upward acres, yeah, under-hill, which is on under-hill.
It's under-hill lane, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so upward, if you use upward acres as an example, that would be a gravel roadway, but it's a local roadway, so the property at the end of that cul-de-sac, which has the most acreage in that entire development, could theoretically be used for something like this, they would be, they would be excluded with the current language. They are about eight hundred and twenty-five feet away from a county road, so I think when we could remove the fact, the language regarding minor collector, major collector, and just say it needs to be within a thousand feet or twenty-five hundred feet from a major roadway. Not even, not even necessarily a major roadway, but at least a minor collector, and then maybe that would.
And I think, like.
Open up more opportunities.
Right, and it, right, it doesn't have to be available to everybody, but I think we would wanna cast a wider mass of people.
And then maybe we add some additional language that says, "For agribusinesses with a lower impact, the city may choose to deviate from this standard," and that, that way we could look at it as a one-off basis for something that's, you know, really minimal and doesn't make sense that they have to have that kind of access.
Yeah, because I like the whole idea of opening this up, I, I like the idea of having this agribusiness zoning, I mean, we're trying to keep Corcoran rural and our farm-based, it's, it's a big deal for us in Corcoran, so, I mean, put our money where the mouth is, you know, and let people have agribusinesses, I think it'd be good for the whole community, and it might keep us rural longer, who knows?
I think that's staff's hope, yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed, I can't wait to have a sip of wine there. Couple questions, this is maybe also for learning, so let's say, not in this instance, another one, another application, it's a winery plus a wedding venue, let's just say, what does that get caught over our eyes to us?
I think it would be an IUP for agribusiness, I, I can talk with our city attorney if we would need to also do an event center, or if the, really if the, if the agribusiness would be enough, because some agribusinesses do tend to, you know, like, I've gone to Apple Orchards where they did have like a Halloween special and they had an event, so I don't know that we would need to have a separate IUP, or if it would be an IUP that approves both components.
Okay, thank you, how, okay, so five acres, you might not know this, okay, I don't expect you to know this, but if you did, it would be amazing. How many properties in the city of Corcoran are five acres or bigger?
I would, in the rural area, most of them, but.
Right.
I think.
Not all of them.
Not all of them.
Because if you consider that what we just made a recommendation for approval tonight, none of those properties would be able to do it.
Right, I know, yeah.
An agribusiness, but that's also the other reason to consider this limitation on, there's no property, it is going to be farmed, but let's say that something changes in the future, that whole back part of the property would not be eligible for doing an agribusiness. If they wanted to keep it in the family for another period of time, so they change that from being an agriculturally, I'm just using it as an example, but anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so not every property, but probably a significant.
The point I'm trying to, like, just get us to think about is, you know, five acres versus four acres, versus seven acres, I mean, we don't have to overthink and, or overkill this, but, like, if we knew where our properties are kind of sitting in that, and in which provides an appropriate amount of opportunity, I guess I would be curious on if five we felt was appropriate, or if we have a ton that are sitting at four point two, is it better to say four? I don't know.
That's fair, so I would say, so far, the event center applications that we've come in, they need at least five acres to accommodate all the parking, so I think that's where the five acres in my mind is coming from, and that's what I'm comfortable saying, and really, that's the minimum, things below that, it's really difficult to start accommodating, you know, the, the bathroom facilities and the, you know, the setbacks that would be required of it, and I think, just, not that we approve this ordinance based on the incoming application that we know is coming, but they are not quite at ten, but they are more, the, the overall site is more than five acres, and I, and I, working with them, they do have enough space for all the parking that they're proposing and the building that they're proposing with significant setbacks, so I think that's why, I think five acres is a healthy minimum, open to four acres, I really think anything less than that is just not enough.
Agreed, yeah, I just wanted us to think through that, I, I didn't know, you know, how many are four, between four and five, like, if, if it's, you know, is that a threshold? 'Cause that's like an important thing to understand. Okay, so just gonna put that one out there, and then, in any of these, do we have a maximum amount of guests? Okay, so the parking says we need a stall per two guests off-street, so I'm assuming that's based on an average, and, okay, but let's just say we're gonna have a huge bang-out, sell all the wine we got situation, which would be cool, but, you know, do we have a maximum amount of guests in these scenarios, or is that part of the IUP?
Yeah, so the event center calls it out that the city could identify a maximum guests for, I'm sorry, yeah, IUP for an event center has that language, and so we could include that in this as well, I don't, did you?
I, I didn't include that in this, but I, I, with the intention of having it be reviewed as part of the IUP.
Yeah, okay, if it's covered, I know we have layers to this, so that's cool, I just wanted to make sure it was covered at some point. The only other thing I thought of was, is there, like, the roadway thing we've talked a ton about, but, and it, maybe this is covered in the event center one, I don't know, but let's just say the te, the tasting room, and let's say it's a different winery, do we want any type of restriction on how close that can be to a neighboring property, or a neighboring property building? Like, if there was a hosting space as part of this, or, like, operations of the business being so close to a neighboring house, 'cause what if the, what if the plot is, like, only allows them to do something in one part and it's right next to their neighbor's house? Maybe I'm overthinking this here, but.
No, I don't think you are, he has language, I think.
So I have language in here that specifically applies to outdoor activity areas being setback a hundred feet from the residential property lines, we could amend that to all activities, doesn't have to be outdoor exclusive, it could be.
Parking lot.
Parking lot, yeah.
Well, parking lot might be good, I don't know, I mean.
Where do you call that off?
If you go to the res, or to the ordinance, it is page three of four, point nine, "Any outdoor activity area shall be setback at least one hundred feet from adjacent residential property lines."
What are the parking requirements?
Parking requirements.
No, I mean, like, are you doing paved, are you doing gravel, are they allowed to park on grass, are you?
It would depend, so if it's a seasonal business, they would be able to, for our current ordinance, they would be able to request a gravel drive, a gravel parking lot, if it's a year-round business, our current ordinance would require it to be paved, so.
And again, these questions aren't targeted towards your application, it's the fact that it's like zoning is why I'm like just thinking about the future, so.
Oh, yeah, and that's the tricky part, is that we know that we're doing this for a specific application, so we wanna make sure that we don't write an ordinance that they immediately can't qualify for, but we also have to write it in such a way, knowing that there's gonna be other people that want to use this, so.
Did you, did you wanna say something?
Well, we're sort of past the point of, because we're in the discussion, I apologize, but, so at this point in time, is there anybody else who has additional questions or concerns from the commission that you would like to raise? It was brought up, it was mentioned, someone said it might be a good idea, the parking being a hundred feet, I think sometimes we throw out numbers there without having an understanding of what that really looks like and what that really does to, to a potential plat, so having to have, if you have a parcel that has two neighbors, you're talking now about a loss of two hundred feet on either side for anything, and I feel like that is restrictive, and because this is an IUP application, in the future, any agribusiness is getting an IUP that is something that could be, there's gonna be enough unique parcels where maybe someone's house is shifted more to the one side of the property line than the other, and so I would be hesitant to change the language that you have already included, and that is mine.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, though, is there a minimum the parking could get to a property line?
Right now, it's a ten-foot minimum for drive aisles and, drive aisles and parking spaces need to be setback at least ten feet, and they're supposed to be trebery as well in that ten-foot.
So they ought, you'd have to.
Yeah, 'cause you, yeah, you have to, you have to screen from that, you screen the headlights, so if they're, if it's adjacent to a property or right of way, you have to screen the headlights within that setback.
I don't think a hundred foot is realistic, I, I think that, and I agree with Karen, I, I think that's too much, but I, I, I do think it needs to be more than ten feet.
We, in, from commercial districts to residential districts and other areas of the city, we require a fifty-foot setback from property lines, like, it's still, like, it's a commercial business right here, and they have a property line that's shared with a residential property, the structure has to be setback fifty feet, so that, that might be a helpful reduction, still have something that's a little bit more than ten feet, and we have experience applying that elsewhere in our code, and that seems to be doable.
I would feel good about forty feet.
Forty feet?
Yeah, unless somebody else has something else to offer, but.
That's for parking?
Yeah.
Can we say that that's a parking lot? Like, isn't that different than, you just said that seasonal or like once-in-awhile type of things are not requiring the same paving as a permanent parking structure?
It would, no, they would still have to be a parking lot, and they'd still have to meet certain standards, it could just be gravel instead of paved, so it would, gravel parking lot would still have to comply with a forty-foot setback if that's what we're setting for a parking center.
Right, but we're saying forty-foot setback from just a property line, so this means that there isn't even necessarily somebody living on the property it's adjacent to, it might just be a farmland plat that belongs to somebody else but doesn't have a home or someone living on there. So much of our farmland in the rural residential area is owned by people who do not actually live on that property, so you're saying you have to be forty feet from the property line, whether there is a structure, a principal structure, located on the other side of the property or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it can always be developed.
Exactly.
And there can be a property, a house there in the future, so.
Couldn't we address, like, I get, I get what we're trying to address, but couldn't we address that through the IUP situation, when it's a unique parcel where we're running, where we're hitting friction on that point? Like, why does this have to be addressed in the zone?
It would have to be, so if we, the performance standards that we're outlining for the IUP to deviate from the specific standards that we've called out in code, you would have to do a variance, and sometimes I, as someone who really hates variances, would make the argument that if the site can't accommodate the performance standards we've identified, then it can't accommodate the use. Now, I have, that argument has not always won, but, and I know that we have, there has been times where it has been a really. Um now, I have that, argument has not always won, but and I know that we have, there has been times where it has been a really tricky parcel, and we have granted a variance from a performance standard, but it's, I would say there is an argument that could be made um so that that it really, that the site really can't accommodate this use.
So we're talking about now adding a condition that forty feet, which would overrule the ten feet in the IUP?
So, I, yes, I believe that is what he
That's what's currently being proposed.
I don't, I don't love it.
What's current, oh, okay, we're talking about the hundred feet is from, is
It's from outdoor activities.
It's a structure.
Outdoor activities.
Yeah, outdoor activities.
I mean, here's the thing, we gotta learn as we go a little bit. This is our first one, and um I love the research done to look at what others are doing. I think it's fair, I love the suggestion on the roadway. Um I think
Well, you know, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope.
What I think is not fair is to object to something without providing an alternative. If if you don't like it.
I would leave it at ten.
Okay.
That's what I would do, and I'm not, not offering suggestions, I think that sometimes we, we want to throw out what we feel like might address a problem that isn't even there, and that's what feels frustrating. Um it, so, but I, that's what I would do, that does not mean that we all have to agree, nor does that mean that this has to move forward with um with with, we can select one of those languages and it could be changed. Um we could make a recommendation to look into something without, I know you want a specific.
I think
It is helpful to have a specific suggestion.
I think it's helpful to have at least a minimum starting point, but we can always add a little bit more language that says, you know, uses with higher volumes, the city may require a higher setback, we can use language like that.
And the truth of the matter is, is that you're lumping all rural residential properties together, and there is a huge difference between something that is five acres and what they can support as an agribusiness, even in terms of their own land use. Like, to have to give up their own property to have a parking lot means that they're doing less agribusiness, so they're just not going to be large enough versus a ninety-acre parcel having an agribusiness, like that's just, there is difference. So I don't wanna write something into the ordinance that would pertain more to one property than the other, but but potentially create um more of an issue um with, because they're they're not equal in terms of the agribusiness they can support. So I understand the performance standard, and so that's why I would leave it at at ten, but um but I am, that's my rec, I mean, that's what I think, and if the proposal is to move forward with something else, then um then that's what we will do and have a performance standard. I just think that um we wanna keep track of the recommendations or the things that we have talked about. So for review, we have talked about the dark night change to the candle lumens. We have talked about the change in language regarding the access to the site. Um at this point in time, what I think was agreed upon was to remove the language regarding um the major and minor roads, and instead indicate twenty-five hundred feet from a
At least a minor collector.
A minor collector. And then there is some discussion around uh we like the hundred-feet outdoor activities from a structure, and then we are considering what we will make a recommendation for regarding property lot, uh parking lots and their standard. And I guess while we can pause here for a moment, if it's helpful, or we can make a decision, uh but I guess I am curious to know if there anything else that other people have to discuss, or is this sort of the last linchpin in making a recommendation for this zoning ordinance amendment?
Tell me, please just tell me if I'm getting too stuck on this, but like, I I just, I don't feel like we have enough data to say five versus four.
Acres?
Acres? Am I getting, am I getting insane on this, or? Uh, you know?
I do think that it is like, um, it is tricky to meet the parking lot performance standards, even in terms of providing enough spots on a smaller property.
I'd also say four acres are less likely to have a lot of crop land for it to really be an agribusiness use.
Yeah.
You're more a homestead, I guess.
But it could be four acres, that's all upland and not a lot of wooded trees or no wetlands versus a five-acre plot that's half of a wetland.
My thing is, we want these types of businesses in the city, so why not do four?
I'm fine with four.
I think as long as it meets the requirements to maintain the business and have places to park and and do it, it's fine.
I'm fine with four, I think there's, it's a logical, I think a logical argument could be made that it's twice the minimum lot size, I think we all learned about that tonight.
Somebody make a motion.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
You make the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we uh
Well, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, you're making a motion? Nope, make the motion, keep going, it's already living, so we gotta finish it.
Okay, I make the motion that we drop, and I'm, I'm, we drop it to four acres. We, instead of the, this, the lighting standard that's in it, that we, we drop it to the point one foot candle. And the setback from the property line to parking is forty feet, and then there's another one I don't remember.
It was a hundred feet.
Twenty-five hundred feet from a minor.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred feet, but, yeah, that would be my motion. There are no seconds.
Does that make sense, what what he said for a motion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we got it.
And that's doable?
And so then if there isn't a second, the motion um fails, and then someone else can make a motion. Um or we can, uh if people are confused on the hangup, um then we can have some additional discussion on what is the point of contention.
I think his, I think his motion covered everything we talked about, correct?
Right.
Or the four acres might not be exactly what we talked about. It was more based on ability to
I think we said, I think um as I'm following the discussion, I thought we landed on reducing from five to four.
Okay.
Um, it's, so I think the issue right now is we need a second in order to move the motion forward.
Right, I'll second.
Okay, so even though I said it killed, it's still alive.
Well, I don't think
Cause there's, there was just a really long pause between your, between the motion made and the second, and so uh typically when that happens, another motion is required. Do you need them to make another motion, or are you just going to go with the?
Do the motion again, but, you know, to repeat all of it, you just, for our, for the sake of
You could just redo the motion if you wanted to.
Yeah, for the sake of, we all know what you're talking about, if you just redo the motion as
Okay, I redo the motion.
Can we, can we have a discussion before we do that?
Well, it's already been done now, we could have, but now there's a living shit.
I was wrong, I was wrong, I was wrong. I wanna hear what Lindsay wants to say.
I agree with everything but the forty feet. I don't agree with the forty feet.
How about twenty?
No.
Ten?
Yeah, that is what it, that's what it is today, so we don't change that, and I'll, I'll agree with you on everything else, but
What is a foot candle? I don't know how bright one foot candle is.
It's more
Good question.
No, that's a great question.
I think it's more for commercial properties.
When you put a motion for point one foot candles compared to one, I don't know what that is, is that a flashlight versus a, you know?
Spotlight.
I don't know, yeah, but I have a
If if you go on one-on-one and go to where the tractor place is
Yep.
Go to their property line, that's one foot candle. And if you go to their property line, you can read a paper.
So a one-foot candle is used more in commercial applications, whereas the point one would be used more in like a dark skies residential area.
So like a, uh, to get across a crosswalk would be more in line with point one foot candles versus one? Okay, I I'm thinking from a safety perspective.
Yeah, so I would say like streetlights are a bit di- streetlights are a bit different, so there might be a streetlight at like an edge of a property, and I don't know, that's necessarily one foot candle might be a little bit more. Um so this would be applicable to parking lights and like building lights for the, it's not necessarily the home light, but they're um the, for the structure, if there's lights on the structure for uh the business building, and then if there's lights in the parking lot, those would be maxed out at point one uh foot candle, okay, now I can't even remember the word, but point one instead of one, which is what we typically require for a commercial use. Um and that, the reason why I got to that number was just a quick Google search on what's compatible with the dark sky ordinance, so that would be pretty minimal at the shared property lines.
I think the only concern is that people can find their way to their cars, basically, right?
In the parking lot, it would be more.
There's illumination to cross the street.
Yeah, it is just, this is just where the lane has traveled to, so that's the property line, it it has to meet that cutoff. Within the parking lot, or or within, close to the building, it would be a higher measurement.
Ten feet away from the property line and uh
It should be even lower, yeah.
In the scenario, you couldn't have, okay, all right, more of a a clarifying thing, I don't think it changes that much, I just don't understand what a foot candle is.
Yeah, I I don't have a great, I don't have a great example to provide you, that's a great question, I I should probably try to figure that out.
Okay, can I make my mo- another motion?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion where we do the ten-foot setback from parking, we do the night sky. We do um the twenty-five hundred feet from the s- the street where over there.
Instead of one
Yeah.
Instead of one thousand.
And what was the other one?
Lot sizes, a minimum of
Oh, and lot sizes, four acres, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, so then that recommendation will go forward to the council, and I would love to, give me just a minute to finish up um the meeting. Uh, okay, at this point in time, we are moving into um other business, we do not have um a council representative tonight, so there's no city council report, but if you have any questions regarding the planning project update that was both emailed to you and left on the dais, um Natalie or Dwight would be happy to answer.
And uh Council Baron Camp wanted to say, feel free to reach out to the director with any questions.
Oh, maybe I will. I have two questions. One how does it work when is there any sort of, okay, let me rephrase how I ask this, is there any sort of like recon slash learning session slash follow-up when we recommend one thing and council does another?
Uh no, I think that sometimes the, that's, there can be an update, but I mean, there are ti- it it does happen where a recommendation is made and council goes a slightly different direction, so that, or a completely different direction. Um I don't know that we have at this point a process in place that really falls up with that, other than checking in with the liaison.
Okay, I saw the the proposal that we had declined got approved. Okay, um I wanted to ask just informally, what was the council's feedback, like themes on the me, 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 uh the three hundred and twenty-five unit apartment off of County Road thirty?
Uh they were somewhat open to it, they wanted that, they wanted a bit more of a mixed-use development plan, and they wanted the commercial areas to be a little bit more spread out on the site than what they were showing. Uh so I, they're, the applicant that brought that forward is at this point, um going back to the drawing board to see how to maybe make that site work and how to maybe incorporate the commercial component, cause it's supposed to be a mixed-use area. Um and they, they were just proposing a residential component, and then kind of setting off a half the site roughly, it wasn't quite half the site, for future commercial uses. Um and they wanted it to be a bit more integrated, instead of having just like a residential area that really wouldn't be walkable to the commercial area, so.
Do you, did, were they positive in the uh in regards to multifamily?
It was positive in to the, regarding the unit type and the product type, yes, it was just more of the overall site functioning as mixed use.
Yeah, wasn't it, uh, wasn't the fact that, this is the one by Bellwether, right?
Correct, yep.
Wasn't it because they were proposing on that industrial or whatever it was that would back up right to Bellwether? Instead of having a a gradient where you would have Bellwether and then multifamily and then like
Yeah, so it wasn't industrial, but they were proposing commercial, yeah.
Yeah, commercial, I'm sorry.
And and I do think there would still be some commercial in that area, but I think that was one of the compo- components that council says they really would like. Um a lot of that area that directly about Bellwether to be more multifamily than commercial, so, and then maybe south from that than commercial.
Yeah, that made a lot of sense.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Okay, and I just wanna draw everyone's attention to the fact that next meeting, our next month's commission meeting is not going to be the day before the Fourth of July, but instead we had talked about rescheduling it, so it will be on July eighth, so that's uh Tuesday. Um so just make sure that you note that on your calendars, and let us know early enough if there's a conflict, or as early as you possibly can. Um but just a reminder, and then again, listed on the bottom is the commissioner, uh the suggested council meetings, um so uh we used to have where there had to be a commission representative present at, present at the council meetings, and now that isn't a requirement, but that's what the recommended um scheduled calendar that you'll see at the bottom of your um agenda is for. Is that if we were to in turn, um take turns being present for those, that's what it would look like, but you're welcome to join um virtually or in person to any meeting that you'd want. Um and uh and to not participate in the one that you are recommended for as well. And at this point in time, then, I will make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I will second that.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I don't need to bounce it. Okay, no one's opposed.